All right, we will go ahead and get started. Welcome, thank you all for coming this evening. My name is Heather Harder and I'm the Executive Director of the Clamath County Chamber, and I will be moderating the event this evening. I strongly, if you're friends with me, you know this, I strongly believe there are many ways to make a difference in the world, but two of those ways are why we are here tonight. One is, one of the ways to make a difference is to vote, and another is to serve in office. So here we are, people who will vote and people who will serve. We're here to hear from the four candidates running for Commissioner, position one. In a few minutes, they'll each have a chance to introduce themselves in detail, but earlier today, the Chamber President randomly drew their names, selecting the order in which they're seated today. I'll say their name real quick, again, they'll introduce themselves in more detail here soon, but first we have Alan Headley, Dave Hensley, Todd Gessley, and Brandon Fowler. Let's give these candidates a warm welcome. I am just quickly going to go through a little bit of housekeeping, and then we'll get to the reason we're all here, which is to hear from these candidates. Our Chamber members have submitted questions all week, and I'll be asking many of those tonight, but if you have a question that you would like to ask, I do have a couple of runners in the audience, if you look behind, you can see them. They'll be, they have index cards and pens, you're welcome to raise your hand throughout the night, and they'll pick up your card or give you a card if you don't have one, and they'll bring the questions up to me, and we'll try to answer as many of those as we can throughout the evening. I do ask for your assistance in keeping things moving at as fast a pace as possible so that we can get your questions answered, and as many of them as we can. Please help by sending your verbal feedback until the end of tonight's forum. You will have an opportunity to talk one-on-one with each of these candidates after the forum, and can give them feedback, or ask any questions that were burning in your mind that weren't asked up here. So, here's how the forum itself will go, and now I'm kind of talking to all of you so that you're aware. Each of you will have two minutes for an opening statement. As I mentioned earlier, your order was selected by our Chamber President. You'll have three minutes for a closing statement when we're done, and we'll do that in reverse order of the opening statements. You will have up to two minutes to respond to each question. Our timekeeper, Darla Sharp, will give you a warning when you have 30 seconds remaining, then she'll show you a heart stop when you've exhausted the two minutes. It goes pretty quick. At that point, please finish your sentence but not your thought. If you mention a fellow candidate, that person will have the option of responding to you for up to one minute. So anybody have any questions? All right, let's begin with opening statements. Are you ready? Ready with time? All right, Alan, you're up first.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming tonight. My name is Alan Headley. I served in the military during the Vietnam War from 1973 until 1976, and I've lived in Bonanza for approximately 12 years, where I built my house, my home, and I live here now. I retired from Oafwood Picture Industry, local 724, and I own my own construction company, Western Regional Building and Consulting, since 2005, and been active in all areas of instruction throughout my life, commercial, residential, along with construction defect consulting in the western United States. I would like to begin by addressing every Clamath County resident, that I will take a stand for less government and to restore and preserve the way of life in Clamath County as we know it. I would also like to endure, cover endorsements. Different endorsements gives the voter another tool to identify a candidate's moral and spiritual beliefs, and can help clarify where one stands on issues. I'm happy to announce, after a tremendously long and spiritual journey, God has truly blessed me with the Right to Life endorsement. One of my main objectives as your Commissioner would be to restore Clamath County where we're compact. As we all know, water is the most precious God-given form of life that every living thing on this planet Earth has in common, but yet it separates and divides us. We can stand divided or join united in a cause that would bring unity to all the people of Clamath County. To unite is to conquer, but to be divided is to be defeated. Thank you.
Thanks to everybody for being here tonight. I want to start by saying it's really important that you're here so you can listen to the candidates and make a well-educated decision as to who you want representing you as your Clamath County Commissioner. Again, my name is Dave Hensley. I want to start by saying the thing that defines me the most is that I'm a family man. My parents are in the audience today, my wife is here with me today. My wife and I have been married for 20, almost 29 years now, and we've raised three beautiful daughters. My wife and I own and operate Five-H Cattle Company right outside of Merrill. We love the rural way of life in Clamath Falls and in Clamath County, and we find great pride in developing our brand into a symbol of trust and respect in Clamath County. I was a dedicated and committed public servant for 28 years as a police officer, and the last six years of my career as your Police Chief here in Clamath Falls. As the Police Chief, I was responsible for writing, managing, and overseeing multimillion-dollar budgets. I have extensive leadership, and my leadership style is to empower, to motivate, and inspire employees. I was responsible for setting policy and vision at the Police Department that was in line with the social expectations and the needs of the community that we serve. I was a member of the Oregon Association Chiefs of Police. I was the co-chair of the Law Enforcement Executive Leadership Institute, and today I'm still a member of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance, which provides accreditation to law enforcement agencies in Oregon and Alaska. I'm a graduate of Oregon State University, go Beavs, any Beavs. I'm a graduate of the prestigious FBI National Academy and the Oregon Executive Development Institute. And quite simply, I'll tell you more about this as we go on through the night, but I'm running for you. I'm a dedicated public servant, and it's time that we put the voice of the people back in government.
You're looking at the newest member of the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much for hosting this event tonight. I'm Todd Gessley. I've been an Oregonian for 42 of my 52 years. I have no ties to special interests or old money here in the basin, which is why my yard signs are the smallest, and you should feel really special when you spot one out in the community. My website is electtoddg, and however it might be the biggest, most comprehensive introduction of myself, if you want to check that out, so check out electtoddg, so Clamath rises. I decided to run because a lot of people here in the community were wishing out loud for leadership at the county level they could trust, to be culturally sensitive, proactive, and unbiased, and that describes the conservative that I am. I might also, just might be the most energetic option that you have on the ballot. God has a sense of humor. Two weeks ago, I was out, had to pray for rain with the farmers at the Headwaters, and he made it snow in April. I've served food to the homeless with the Methodist Church, and got some insights into why our homeless family downtown hasn't moved out to the Mission. We can talk more about that later. I haven't, I also met with the Clamath Tribal Council. I've asked the Cheesecake Factory, Cracked Cracker Barrel, and some ammunition manufacturers to come to town. I have also read all 433, 37 pages of the American Rescue Act Plan, and alerted our county watermaster that funds are available to fix our wells, and that information is now on the county website. I've also studied the status of the unincorporated city of Mont, which is a real thing, and right now, it's in, here in the middle of Clamath Falls and throws off potential developers, but leaving it here allows many of us to qualify for lower interest rate F A H, F H A mortgages, and that's a little secret for you. This is my first time being a public servant, and since 2014, my company Totally Inspired Media has helped citizens and patriots present evidences of crime and corruption in government, call for accountability, swift and fair judgment, freedom, transparency, and choice.
Well, first off, I want to thank everybody being here tonight. I want to thank the Chamber for putting on this event. It's great to see the job creators in our community being inspired to come out and listen to candidates that want to run for Commissioner, talk about how we're going to try and improve the community. So for me, I've spent 25 years in business, I've spent 15 years working with public safety entities in our community, I've been a volunteer, I've been a leader in public safety, I've worked for our sheriff, I've worked on campaigns. I've been through a lot of things over the last 20 years in the basin. We've seen a lot, and we've had a lot of emergencies, we've had a lot of disasters the last three years as I've served as Clamath County's Emergency Manager and Public Information Officer for the Sheriff. As we go through the next few years, that's not going to change. We're not, the water's not coming, we don't have the rain, we don't have the snow pact, and so we have to look at other options, we have to figure out how to diversify our economy if we're going to continue to fund the important things like public safety. So as we move forward, we're going to be talking about those types of items, we're going to talk about economic development, and there's definitely those of us that have plans for that, but as we move forward, it's important to understand who's going to have the backing of the public safety community, who's going to have the backing of the business community as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. So at this time, I'll start asking the questions that have been submitted so far. We will, the next question will start with Dave, and then come around, and then we'll move on, the next question will be asked first of Todd, and so on and so forth. So Dave, what college did you graduate from? When did you, I guess we already know the answer to that, when did you graduate? What degree or degrees did you earn, and what education do you have in addition to your degree?
Couple of minutes, right? Two minutes, you said?
Minutes.
So I'm a graduate of Oregon State University, graduated in 1993, that's where I met Benji, and we've been together ever since. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in political science. I'm a graduate, like I said, of the Oregon Executive Development Institute, and I am a graduate of the FBI National Academy. Now let me briefly explain what the National Academy is, because that sounds confusing, I'm not an FBI agent. The FBI National Academy was developed by President Hoover in 1935 to make a systematic approach to policing across the country. It is a law enforcement executive leadership program that less than 1% of law enforcement executives are selected to attend globally. So I was selected to attend, represent the state of Oregon, and I was in Quantico, Virginia for three months. So I've got that as well. My mid-management degree, or excuse me, my mid-management certification for policing, I went to the Mark Hatfield School of Government at Portland State University to finish up that certification as well, and I have a litany of training as a law enforcement officer in things like managing organizational change, inspiring and motivating staff, ethics and leadership, advanced media relations, all the way through emergency management courses. I literally have thousands of hours of training through the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training on a whole host of topics relevant to being a county commissioner, like we talked about. Thank you.
All right. I graduated from Milo Adventist Academy in southern Oregon, just about 50 miles south of Roseburg, where I met my high school sweetheart, Gianni, who's here tonight with my son, Christian. Then I went up to Walla Walla University in Washington, and then I went over to Southeast Asia Union College for six months in Singapore, studied there, and then came back and finished at the Walla Walla with a degree in Mass Comm Communications, Business Minor. Then in 2007, I got my Project Management Certification from City University, and I just, two weeks ago, got my General Contractors License from Oregon by sitting out for a test at the Clamath Community College. So that's my background.
So for me, I went from high school straight into the United States Navy specializing in communications and intelligence, and I spent my time in the service, went from there back into the private sector, went to work right immediately for Pacific Bell Communications, and worked my way through AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, and numerous telecommunications companies, where I served in a lot of leadership roles. I went through and served for several years as a National Director of Project Management for a nationwide construction company in the telecommunications industry, and have been a leader throughout the last 25 years in that, in that industry. Over the last three years, as Clamath County's Emergency Manager, I've also taught and/or led a lot of classes on incident command, and we've, as we've worked to improve the incident command structure here in Clamath County, after many, many years of people ignoring the incident command system, and we've needed that training, and we've needed that leadership over the last three years with the wildfires and the emergencies that we've seen.
Well, sir, when I was young, I grew up on a farm in Escudida, at a boarding school academy, Southern Adventist Boarding School. I learned the value of farming, picking onions, so on and so forth. So I feel for the farmers here. Never had a problem with lack of water, so. Went to junior high at Los Sierra Academy. The army got in the way, or the war. Went to join the military, got out. Continued my education at Silicon Community College, took the preliminary entry classes, graduated from the Sheriff's Academy at Glen Helen in San Bernardino County in 1985, continued my service with them at the, as the High Angle Ascent Assault Team, assigned to aviation, and we took care of people that decided to have a good time on the mountain. After that, 1995, continued my education by taking criminal law classes at High Desert College and Low Valley. I'm approximately, I think, nine units away from my AA degree. Hope to achieve that sometime in the future, near future. I also have completed my General Contractors License in 2005 for the state of California, which is approximately almost a 3,000, or 300 question bar test that takes a full day. That pretty much completes my education. Thank you very much.
I'm going to speak really loudly, the battery's dying, you need to change them for me. But if new resources were available, what one area of county services do you feel most needs additional resource? And let's especially start with Todd, please.
I'd like to hand that right to law enforcement, because right now, we don't have 24/7 patrols between 3:00 and 7:00, I believe it is, that we don't, don't have patrols. So I'd like to extend that directly to law enforcement, and also put some money into our DA office, because we have to be able to bring people in and, and, and train them, our interns that are here, so they don't just leave. We have to probably be able to prosecute the criminals, and so those are the two areas, that's the area I have to start with.
So Todd's stealing a little bit of my thunder, but you know, public safety is near and dear to my heart, I've been working that issue for the last 20 years, so absolutely, the first and foremost thing we have to do is, we have to fully fund public safety. That includes our sheriff's office, it includes our, excuse me, it includes our DA's office, it includes everything top to bottom. Public safety is more than just law enforcement. We, is fire EMS, it is everything around that, it's parole and probation, it's all the, all the pieces of that puzzle, and right now, we're not doing a very good job of it. We're doing what we can, but we have to do better.
Alan?
I would agree with Todd. We definitely need to put some more money into law enforcement. I had a perspective planned, kind of like what the sheriff had in mind, build a bigger reserve department, temporary dollar loss, but long-term income. It would save the county a tremendous amount of money. One-stop, one-shot supermarket, waystation for prisoners coming in, so we can then draw from federal and state funding to fund the jail, and then be able to employ more officers. So yes, I think that's definitely an area that needs to be looked at. And also schooling, KCC, offering internship as far as skills, and also the culinary school. Those are two areas that I would definitely look hard to, to invest in, because it would help the infrastructure, bring more people into the area, and possibly even reopen the airport. Thank you.
You ready? You gave me that look like. Well, I love hearing these guys talk about law enforcement, I think that's great. As your retired Chief of Police, of course, more money for law enforcement is always very advantageous. I see Sheriff Caber's here today, and I think, so thank you Sheriff for showing up today. I think Sheriff Caber's doing an outstanding job at the sheriff's office, so I would look to try to figure out how we could support Sheriff Caber to make sure that he's providing the services that he wants to provide to his constituents in a very effective and efficient manner, so that's something I'm extremely interested in as well. So I applaud these people for saying that. Clearly, that's my background. But before I dive fully into law enforcement, I think it's important to recognize, I would ask you what you want. It's money that's available to your county, so I think it's important that, that we lead, you know, government is for the people, by the people, so I would start with the other Commissioners and reaching out to you and saying, hey, we've got some resources available to us, what are your ideas, and help us prioritize what you want. I think first and foremost, that's extremely important, because I work for you. So that's really important. And I would also try to figure out how we could equitably divide some money up, so we could, we could try to touch as many programs in a positive way as we could. Clearly, on the top of my list is the sheriff's office, but also, we need to look at housing. It's easy for us to say that we need to grow our economy in Clamath County, and that's true, but before we can build our economy, we need to make sure that Clamath County has the infrastructure to support it, and one of the things that we need to do is, we've got to take a serious look at our housing inventory. So when we attract businesses to come to Clamath County, there's actually places for their employees to live. We need to look at workforce development. One of the things I hear businesses say is, there's no place for our employees to live, and, and we can't find a workforce that has the skills that we need. So we, I would ask you what you want, we would prioritize those, and we would try to touch as many, as many departments as we could in a very positive way. Thank you.
In recent years, our community has been affected by wildfires. So what do you see is the role of the county and the county commissioners in wildfire management? Brandon, we'll start with you.
Well, so that's a, it's interesting that it works out that that starts with me, because that's what I've been doing the last three years. A lot of long days, a lot of long nights. I've sat in, I've sat with Sheriff Caber in my truck at 2:30 in the morning out in Silicon in the middle of the 242 fire, trying to figure out how we're going to keep people safe, how we can get people back to their homes, things of that nature. So that's an issue that's near and dear to my heart. I've been working that issue and working on protecting our communities for the last three years in that capacity, and I've been working with our public safety entities to improve public safety for the last 15 years. And so it's, it's one of those areas that I have a lot of ideas, and I've seen firsthand some things we need to do different. Part of that public safety funding is emergency services in general, and we, there's more we need to be doing. We need to be better training our, our citizens, we need to be better training some of the people within county government, and we've been working on some of those efforts, but more can always be done.
Alan, can you move a little bit closer to the microphone as I'll send it back? Thank you. Questions to you now.
I would definitely attempt to streamline the money that is appointed in there, and I'm going to use my neighbor down the street as an illustration. He applied for helping to clear his property. They said, oh, it'll be about a year or so, you have to go through the process. And now he waits another fire season to gain assistance. He's not quite able to do what he used to do, like a lot of us, so he needs a little assistance, and I help, help him out when I can, but I have my own place to also worry about. So yes, to streamline the government red tape of the money that's already available to people of Clamath County for clearing the property around them, that would be one of my main priorities. And something I saw that was lacking in the cutoff fire that was approximately three tenths of a mile away from our house, it's the closest I've ever come to losing my house in my life, and it was very, very scary. The entities that fought, I commend them, but the lack of the available assets that the local people have, including myself, no one has ever come out to look, even though they said, yes, we'll be out. I have a 10,000 gallon backup water tank with two fire pumps, but no one has ever come out to check that out. So availability of the assets in the area so the firefighters and the people that are fighting the fire know what's available in the immediate area, and after 12 years, and I told everyone, no one listens and no one comes out. So yes, I think there needs to be attention brought to that area. Thank you.
Raise your hand if you're happy with what happened last year when our county was on fire. Yeah, me either. We've got to put an end to these devastating wildfires. It's utterly ridiculous that we're in this position that we're in. When, when my wife and I, before we bought Five-H Cattle Company and started that in Merrill, we lived in Keno, and the Keno Rural Fire Department approached us one day and said, hey, we've got a grant to thin out your property. We'll do 75% of the work if you'll commit to 25% of the work, and I said, sign me up, let's make this happen. This fire mitigation is outstanding, I'm on board. And they went through our entire rural neighborhood that we lived in out there in Keno, and they did all this fire mitigation, and burnt, burnt all the brush and knocked limbs down so you could walk under the limbs and burn all of that. And number one, it looked outstanding. Number two, I saw more wildlife than I had seen in forever. Number three, the grass started growing, it looked amazing. So we've got to continue to work with the state to loosen up the purse strings to allow us to continue to do things like that. That was an outstanding program, but it costs money, there's a financial constraint to that. So I would be up in Salem trying to figure out, how do we get that money back down to Clamath County so we can do some of this fire mitigation, number one. Number two, we've got to log. We, we know what, what logging does for our economy, we know what it does for our forests, we've got to thin our forests. I heard, I was here last night, and I heard one of the gubernatorial candidates talk about the number of trees per acre, and there should be like 250, she said. No, I haven't done the math and I haven't done the research. I'm totally quoting her, and it may not be perfect, but her point was that there are 250 trees per acre is a healthy forest, but we have as many as 1,000 per acre in some of our forests now, and what we're seeing is these devastating wildfires, and we, we can't stop them. And that translates into a horrific position for our community, for law enforcement, we've, so we've got to put an end to that as well. So for you, I would fight for you in Salem, and I would fight for you in, in DC to loosen up those purse strings so we can do some fire mitigation and some logging.
Well, I spent the last week doing fire mitigation around my own house, dragging branches and cutting them, and Christian helped me haul them, and so, you know, help, like I say, helping the local people do it, or just doing the basic education. I did it because I saw a sign in Moore Park that showed what the distances should be, and I thought that was pretty cool around the house. I got home and thought about that, bumping into that in the park, sometimes some simple things, just educating people, but again, we do need to educate people and get back into logging, open up some of our mills if we can. My, one of the questions, just being a new person to the area, is why are we, you know, where are the helicopters going to go when we, when we empty our dams? You know, how is that going to work as far as a dam removal? Have we forgotten, there was big floods, but yet there's some good reasons to maybe remove the dam. So that's some, that's some interest, just as a new person coming to town, I'm asking those questions. Thank you.
All right. The next question has to do with the homeless situation in our community. As a Commissioner, how will you work to address that situation? And that question goes to Alan.
Well, I've been very impressed with what Medford has done. They've taken the homeless population, the ones that qualify, and built those small buildings for them that they can call home, and then have them go out in the community and find jobs, and they help them find jobs. It's a little bit of a stretch for us financially, but there's nothing out of the realm. If we have money, and I've been looking at some of the numbers that they've addressed for infrastructure, and there's approximately $162 million as of March, and they said there's billions of dollars available. So why don't we try to tap into some of those resources to address that problem that we have? Otherwise, it's not going to get any better, it's only going to get worse. Talk is cheap. Let's put our money where our mouth is and make it happen, and I would do that for you. I would try to find a resource. I would try to find the resources, connect those together, to put something together that would fix it and not put a band-aid on it. Thank you.
Let me start by giving you my opinion. I've heard people say that we have a homeless problem in Klamath County. I think that law enforcement officers and the sheriff would agree with me. We don't have a problem. Portland has a problem.
Amen.
Salem has a problem. We have an issue, but we can be better. One of the things that I'm going to do as your next Klamath County Commissioner is I'm going to develop a committee similar to the one that I sat on in Benton County. It was called the Commission to End Homelessness. That committee had people apply to be a part of that group, and people that were in a tough spot in their lives that needed housing. They would come before us. We would talk to them. We would interview them. We would take them into our program, and we would assign them a counselor that walked side by side with them through their struggles. We had all kinds of people on this panel with us. There was law enforcement. There was people from housing. There was people from DHS. You name it, we were there. Someone from the DA's office. And we helped them identify what their struggles were and put them in touch with the right people to solve that problem. Maybe they needed some education. They had to finish their GED. Maybe they had to get rid of a couple of tickets that were outstanding so they could get their license back. They couldn't afford insurance. And then, we had the housing... One of the housing groups there as well that could give out vouchers. We had some transition housing, and we don't have that inventory in Klamath County. But in Benton County, we actually had control of some transitional housing. And we would put people in transitional housing and help them accomplish these benchmarks throughout their life so they could transition out of transitional housing into a solid job. Now, they have a driver's license. They have a car. They can pay for daycare or whatever it was, and they can transition into their own home. So, I'm going to look at putting that committee in Klamath County because it was very successful in Benton County, and I was very proud to be a part of it.
One of the things I've learned interviewing the business owners and some of the homeless that I've helped serve and feed, we do have a great group of nonprofits and churches that do step in and are helping the homeless. We'll always have poverty will be with us. So, but as a community, what we can do to step up and help that, and some of our nonprofits are filling that gap at the moment. One of the things I've learned is that we have our own homeless folks that hang around downtown, and I call them the family of our Klamath Falls homeless. And but... And we also have the mission down by the tracks, and that's where a lot of the transitional people come in. We're a cheat... You know, we're an overnight. We're a meal ticket halfway between Sacramento and Portland. And sometimes they even give them gift cards and send them down here. And so, these guys are getting off. And if you are here in Klamath Falls, would you want to go stay in a place where you had unknowns coming through every night? Probably not. And that's what our local guys are telling me here that I find downtown that I've talked to and talked to. There's like, you know, we don't want to go down there where there's unknowns coming in and out every night. So, we kind of have two issues we need to work on is how do we deal with the folks that are just passing through and how do we deal with those that are with us? And so, I like the committee idea, Dave, and setting that up and seeing what we can do to take care of our folks.
So, recently, I read a study that, you know, roughly 60% of the homeless population in general in our country has some form of mental illness or has some form of mental challenges. And one of the things that we've seen because of this is we've seen with the state removing funding for mental health and things of that nature, we see an increased problem here with our... You know, with the homeless populations. One of the things we have to do is we have to go back and we have to keep beating on the door in Salem to improve funding for mental health programs. Okay? We have to do that. That's... We can Band-Aid the problem as much as we want, but we have to really start addressing some of the challenges that these folks are facing. And too many of them are facing mental health challenges. And so, we have to start at the root cause.
Thank you. Next question, and this will start with Dave. Many would say there's some divide in our community. How can it be healed, and what can you do as a commissioner?
So, I start on the hardest question, just random draw. I should have bought a lottery ticket. We do have some divide in our community, and I think it starts with healthy and real and honest conversations. And I think that sometimes we get so caught up in our own ideology and our own beliefs that we're not willing or able to open our eyes and sit across the table from somebody and try to understand how somebody truly feels, what their values are, what their culture is. And I think that that's too bad. As the chief, and as... I'll go back to that. I swore before God and all of you to protect everybody's constitutional rights to freedoms and your liberties, and I took that very seriously. One of my core principles is find strength in your differences. When I retired as a chief of police, one of the last three things I said to the group of police officers when I walked out the door was value each other, find strength in your differences, and be accountable to each other. And I believe strongly in that, and I think sometimes we lose our way and we don't take that to heart. But I think it's important that we have healthy relationships. We have real conversations. We have hard conversations with people. I'm not afraid to call people on the phone that maybe have a different opinion than me. There are people even in this audience that don't have the same opinion as me, and you're not afraid to pick up the phone and call me. And I think that's healthy, and we have some real honest and real conversations about that. We may not always agree, and that's okay because I think a world shouldn't agree. We get better when we challenge each other, and we don't see eye to eye. But as a Klamath County Commissioner, my priority is going to be to sit at the table with people that I don't understand their point of view and have them explain it to me, open my eyes and shed some light on maybe a deficit in my life that could be better. So, thank you.
You know, everything seems like the news media and everything is just click-based, you know? Just put the headline out there, and let's troll it. And, you know, we've kind of developed that as a culture. And I think we need to go back to like the pilgrims did and sit down at the table and eat together and spend time together as a community, not just having emotional instant reactions and instant hate and looking at the divides, but actually sitting down and talking and listening. And there's a group that's meeting at the library next Thursday called Braver Angels. And they're starting that here for those people who would like to join in and talk about, you know, where they are and their different opinions and just get to know each other. So, that may be something you may want to check out is Braver Angels.
So, I find it interesting, you know? We get to a point where, I think, from a societal standpoint, where we expect to agree with our elected officials 100% of the time or the person we're going to vote for. We have to agree with them 100% of the time. We have to line up on every issue. You know, I've been married 25 years, and I'll tell you what, my wife and I don't agree on every issue. So, the notion that we're going to agree with our elected officials 100% of the time is a little bit ludicrous. So, it's kind of an interesting thing to me. But the other thing I take away from this is that I've sat down with, you know, water users, and people have asked me to come speak, things like that. I don't need to come speak to a group. I want to come sit down in a round table. I want to listen to what the challenges are that you face. I traded messages today with, you know, the Klamath tribes. These are folks I've lived and worked around for the last 20 years. Same thing, I don't need to come give a speech to the tribal council, you know, tell the tribal council anything. What I want to do is sit down and learn and understand what they're trying to say, the same as I sit down and learn and listen from the water users. And that's how we're going to solve problems. We're going to sit down across the table, and we're going to listen to everybody's challenges and listen to the way people have to live and find constructive solutions.
Alan.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Many would say there's some divide in our community. How can it be healed, and what can you do as a commissioner?
Well, number one, I would definitely keep the open door policy as Danny Boyd had. And if there was a problem, I would definitely look into it, and I would personally get back to you. I would identify it. I would find out what could be done and then address that. And no, I wouldn't need a committee to do that. As far as understanding people, there's one thing that our sergeant told us when we graduated from the academy. He said to all of us, to the graduating class, always remember to live by the spirit of the law, or the law will most likely be hard, if not impossible, to enforce. So, yes, trying to understand people, understand where they're coming from. If you don't, it's almost impossible to deal with the situation. You have to walk into it with an open mind. And as your commissioner, I would accomplish that and do that. And if I... There's no such thing in my book, and I was taught, you can't or not. You will do it, and you will find a way, and it's never going to be impossible to find a solution. And sitting down to figure out what it is is what it's all about. The farmers just sat down all these years and figured out how and why. Now, we have the money, and I have a statement in here that one of the Indians spoke. It sounds like more red tape from the feds. So, now that we have the money, they can't even figure out how to apply it because there's red tape in the way. Thank you.
This next question will start with Todd. I have two from the audience kind of related, so I'm going to combine them. If elected, what can you do as a commissioner to help address the water crisis? And the second part is, what is your opinion on the Bureau of Reclamation-Klamath Project allocation announcement that was made this past Monday?
Wow, okay. The water issue that we have here is, as commissioners, I think we can communicate, can do more communication and try to figure out... I mean, I did a list. I sat down as a new guy, and I looked, and there's like 45 different entities that are involved in weighing in on the water from Pacific Corp. to the Reclamation. And I know yesterday, the farmers didn't get as much water as they wanted, and the tribe said, hey, you know, you're surfing what you're taking. It's a federal and Oregon and California created... You know, those are the guys that are doing a lot of this. And it's kind of above what we as commissioners can do, although it does affect our economy here. It's just kind of like asking, can the commissioners change the gas prices? Can the commissioners change the food prices? Probably not. So, I don't have an answer as far as what exactly I could do as a commissioner on that, but I am doing all I can to learn and come up to speed and increase the communication that we could.
So, one of the things, when presented this question about a month ago at another forum, one of the things I brought up was that it's a public safety issue in many respects. And I tie a lot of this back to public safety because for the last couple of years, we've had a growing problem with illegal marijuana grows in the eastern portion of this county. And we've not been able to do enough to stem that tide. Last year, just the grows that we busted at the sheriff's office, we estimate that over 30 million gallons of water was stolen to feed those grows. Okay? We can blame everybody in the world for this problem, and we can blame the Bureau of Reclamation. We can blame other interests. The reality is there's not enough water for all of the interests. Okay? But what we can do is we can do the things that we can control, and we can stop the bleeding. We can stop the theft or work harder to stop the theft. And that's one of the things that we have to do, I think, first.
Alan.
I spoke with a few people and had the privilege of what they're doing tonight. And I find that the Klamath River Compact seems to be one of the key elements. I was surprised to learn that, A, domestic water is the first use of that. B is irrigation. C is recreationally used fish and wildlife, then industrial hydro and other uses. So, these poor farmers, I do feel extremely bad for them. While reading the minutes from the Klamath Water Stakeholders Meeting, Craig Tucker, a tribe member, said this best. The meeting felt more like a pep talk from the feds. So, we've got all these people gathered together to try to figure out the water problem. The Department of Interior, Commerce, and Agriculture stated you could use billions of dollars from a recently passed infrastructure law, and there's 162 million available for restoration, especially for Klamath. Do we have enough of our taxpayer dollars to do something about it? Yes. We're all gathered together as others are meeting right now at this moment to figure out how to possibly time their crops to minimize 3/4 per foot, acre foot for water allocation this season down to 2 and 1/2 times less. Save our farms, save Klamath County. Less talk and more action. Thank you.
This is a hard topic. It's a hard topic for me personally for a couple of different reasons. Number one, my wife and I have four water contracts, and we're B water users, and we're not going to get any water again this year. It's just 50,000 acre feet is not going to do anything for our farm. So, we've had to get really creative and figure out ways to offset that so our business continues to be successful, but it is challenging. So, there's that side of me. Here's the other side of me. One of my nearest and dearest friends is a tribal member, his name is Jeff Williams. And I just talked to him last night, and he told me I could say this. And I've talked to him a lot about their culture and understanding the native culture because I don't. I'm not native. There's no way. I have never lived that. I don't have those experiences. So, we had a long talk on my drive home last night because I was mad about an issue. And we've had several conversations about what the fish really mean to the natives, and he put it in perspective for me in a way that I could understand. So, there are two opposing sides to this issue, and both of them have equal, real concerns. One doesn't outweigh the other. So, now, we've got an infinite... We've got this resource that's not getting... We're not getting more of this resource. We're getting less of it, and we have to figure out a way to share it. When I was at the National Academy, I met Mike Durant. He was the pilot that was flying the helicopter in Mokadishu, and they made the movie Black Hawk Down. And when I sat down and I was visiting with him, he said something we have never forgotten. And he said, Dave, you know, one of my favorite quotes is, or one of my favorite sayings is, don't tell me we can't. Tell me how we can. And I kind of approached this water issue like that as well. How can we solve this? There are programs that we can do that will clean the water. It will deepen the lake. There is a way to expand the resource if we create that infrastructure to do that. And I'm really interested in picking that program back up and talking to that company and seeing where we can't go with cleaning that lake. But we've got to try something different. We have to. We owe it to the tribes. We owe it to our farmers.
All right. The next question will start with Brandon. In your opinion, what are the top three services that citizens need from local government, and how would you deliver them?
So, everything starts with police firing roads. Okay? It's public safety. It's infrastructure. Fire, for the most part, you have special districts and fire agencies to take care of that separately from what county commissioners manage. But we do have a lot of input and work with our fire agencies pretty closely. Public safety, we've talked about that at length. We have to provide for the security of the people. It's the most basic fundamental thing that we do. And then, infrastructure. You know, our infrastructure has taken some hits, and we've seen, you know, roads that our public works folks are doing their best to keep up on, but we haven't had enough money in those programs for many years. And so, we need to continue to work harder on infrastructure and improving bridges that were built back in the 50s and 60s and things of that nature. So, we really have to get back to the basics of those three things.
Alan.
Well, I think I touched on this one other time, but we're talking about roads, right?
We're talking about the three top services you think that citizens need from government and how you would deliver them.
Well, we have a road that needs work. Districts, we'd like to create our own road district, but we don't even have enough people on our street to create one. Interstructure is necessary to be able to do things like this, and then people need to participate. I'd like to see the county come out and take care of our roads for us because we do pay our taxes. I don't know what else that would be added to that except we need to release some money to the people that can... to the people that can take care of it because obviously our roads aren't being taken care of, and that was one of the main complaints at several meetings. So interstructure again, yes.
Dave.
So if we boil this back and let's go back a hundred years, government was established to provide just three basic services to cities. We've blown it way out of proportion over the years, but let's just get back to really, what are we talking about? Number one, infrastructure, that, that's great, but what does that really mean? Public safety is first and foremost. You have to live in a, in a place where you feel safe. When you have a safe community, people go outdoors, they exercise more, you have a healthier, you have a healthier society. That's statistically proven, that's scientifically proven. People engage their neighbors more, there's more of a sense of pride in your community. There's a lot of very important and necessary things that, that, that come out of public safety. So number one, you've got to provide an atmosphere where people feel safe, that they have a sense of pride and they want to raise a family and live here. Number two, it, roads. We've got to get from point A to point B, and that's not your job to fix potwools in the street. It's government's job to do that with your tax pay, with your, your, the money you pay in taxes. That is a basic government necessity. And third is sewer and water. That's a basic necessity that government should afford you. And that also includes domestic wells. And I know the commissioners have done an outstanding job with our dry wells last year. We fell victim to that as well. Fortunately, we got it going again, didn't have to get government assistance, which is wonderful, but water, sewer, roads, and number one on the list, public safety. Thank you.
Well, we got food, shelter and, and housing, you know, that we've got to get done and it's part in, in safety. So, you know, having, having jobs here, we also need more housing. Having more housing means that we have to have wells for more wa, more, more water to, to, to get to those houses. We've also got to, with the housing, we've got a lot of vacant lots around, around town that aren't doing anybody any good. And most of us here don't know how to build our own houses. So if we're going to, you know, actually, and there's not enough builders here at this point to build new houses. So I've spent some time trying to, to bring in outside developers to build his houses, but not to own the place. My biggest fear is that what's going to happen is the feds are going to break, break the farmers by not giving them water. And then Wall Street will buy up the farms and then they'll come back ten years later and turn them into subdivisions. And that's why we need to really focus on what is really going on here. So I think the role of government is to communicate and find out who's actually in charge of what and, and who's pulling the trigger, who has what rights and what do the treaties say? And what, you know, what, what does, you know, what agreements have been made? And somebody needs to sit down and make sense of this. And then, and let the people know, this is the rules we're playing by. The sovereign nation needs to weigh in on that and maybe the county commissioner. So our role is to communicate so that we can actually go ahead and, 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 and make our, get our housing and, and so we can have housing, so we can have jobs and yet have a straight path forward. And everybody that's here seems befuddled by how to do that. And so I'm coming up to speed as quick as I can as a journalist and asking those questions. Thank you.
All right. Alan, this next question will start with you. One of, someone in the audience would like to know your guys' opinion of the Greater Idaho Initiative.
That's a very large question, that's a very large question to cover at this point, but I'll try to cover it as quickly as possible in two minutes. You'll be getting it on your ballot, obviously. It's to do a analysis on the total projected impact on Klamath County that has to do with property tax, the taxes you pay in the store, your school taxes, your personal taxes. It's so much, it would take hours to cover it all, but that initiative is only to investigate it. I've done my own studies for it. Some people are against it, some are for it. I've gone to my own tax band before I stuck my foot in it to figure out whether or not it was a plus or a minus. If it's a plus, I'm for it. And that's why I jumped in. And I, I couldn't help but see the way that the press labeled me as an activist. Well, I looked up activists and it said politically active for the people as a citizen. And I won't disagree with that. I'm definitely politically active. The initiative will be on the ballot. We hope you all participate in it, depending on your feelings. And as far as your sales tax, your sales tax, your six percent that you pay in Idaho, believe it or not, goes for the PERS in the school districts. That's what pays the teachers. That's why you don't have school tax on your property tax there and your property tax now is cut in half. So it's a very large spectrum to cover. I'd love to talk to you personally afterwards if we have time, but my time is almost up. So thank you.
So this is an interesting topic and I'm really anxious and curious to see how the vote turns out in Klamath County. As a Klamath County Commissioner, obviously it, we're the will of the people. So I, I wouldn't really take any action on it unless I knew what the people wanted to do. But I'm really interested to see how this vote's going to turn out. But let me give you my, my personal opinion. Some are going to like it and some are, but I get to have an opinion. So here you go. I'm really concerned about the financial impact to Klamath County if we do that. And here's what I mean by that. We are certified, people, we have professions that are certified in the state of Oregon. So do we all have to get recertified in the state of Idaho? So let's talk about your police officers. Let's talk about your doctors. Let's talk about your teachers. Let's think about the millions, if not billions of dollars it's going to cost us to transition to Idaho. I think that hurts. And that's one of my, that is my biggest concern about this idea. So people say, we're not Salem, we're not Portland, we don't want to be. God bless you. I think the exact same thing. So how do we resist that without becoming a different state? We fight for local control. We should, the county commissioners should control mask mandates. The county commissioners should control all kinds of things when it comes to how we're going to allocate resources that are provided to us or funding that are, that's provided to us by the state. But that needs to be local control. That's why we elect local officials. So I'm going to do everything in my power to fight Salem. I'm going to do everything in my power to fight DC to make sure that your voice is equally as important to anyone in Salem and Portland. That's how we tackle that. Thank you.
It's true that the measures before local voters do not call for some kind of immediate succession, even if we vote for it. But instead, they require the counties and the, or the both legislatures of both states to look at the issue. Oregon and Idaho are, for example, oceans apart on abortion. Idaho just passed a restrictive law that at six months or six weeks, you know, it bans abortion after six weeks. And Oregon lawmakers have turned around and said, hey, we're, we're creating a fifty million dollar fund to pay for people to come here and have abortions. And I, you know, that doesn't seem quite right to me, but, but, you know, we do have to look at the financial implications of, of how do we change all our certifications and so on and so forth if this thing came down. So anyways, just it's, someone's floating a balloon. I don't think it's going to go anywhere. I think local control is what we need to fight back. We can tell people, this is a non-smoking park, this is a not drug-free school, zone. We can, we can, we can make our own rules here locally to the best of our ability regardless of what the state passes up, up, up north. Thanks.
So this is an issue I studied several years ago, actually before I took off on its, on its current trajectory. And it's an interesting proposition. You have the eastern half of Oregon that largely feels like it's ignored by the western half of Oregon. And I certainly understand those that feel that way. I certainly feel that way myself at times and I, I understand how we get here. Is this the answer? I don't know. I'm really curious to see what the citizens of Klamath County have said. There's a lot of counties that have already voted on this issue and, and they've been pretty clear that they support it. There's a lot of hills left to climb if, for this to come to fruition. You have to get both legislatures to support it. You have to get Congress to support it. That really doesn't sound like an easy prospect. But at the end of the day, I think it's, it's interesting that, you know, we come back to the basic fundamental rights that people want local control. And that goes back to our founders. We wanted local control two hundred and twenty-seven years ago. And here we are again today, still fighting for local control.
All right. Next question. Please assess the business climate here in Klamath County and explain what you would do to enhance it.
I'm kicking us off.
You are.
So everyone in this room can agree that we've got to enhance our economy in Klamath County. None of us are going to argue about that. My priority though is how do we enhance our economy while we still protect and prioritize our local businesses? My wife and I, we love to take trips to little towns that we've never been to, go to eateries that are not a name brand and stay in old hotels. We think that that just really teaches us a lot about a community. And we take a lot of pride in that and we find a lot of joy in that. So that's something that's really important to me in Klamath County as well. How do we continue to grow our economy, but at the same time prioritize and protect our local businesses? The business climate here is challenging. I, I met with Kaseeda and I've met with businesses as well that talk about the move and the transition to Klamath County and the challenges they face. I talked a little bit ago about some of their frustrations are a lack of housing. And I don't mean low-income housing. We can talk about that later, but we're really missing our inventory in that mid-income housing market. We have families that can afford higher level homes into that mid-income housing market, but they buy down, they don't buy up, and it's causing a great deal of compression in our low-income housing. So we've got to work on our infrastructure. We've got to work on housing. We've got to work on workforce development. And quite honestly, we've got to support our teachers. I'm not going to say we need to work on our schools. I think we have tremendous schools. But we need to support them fully so they can really advance our children as well and, and help them either go to college or to trades or whatever they want to do to be successful. But we've got to focus on our infrastructure to attract businesses to Klamath County. And we've got to, we've got to figure out a solution to water. I'll go back to that because we know the agricultural community puts millions and millions of dollars into our, our economy. So we've got to figure out a way to continue to support our agriculture because let's face it, agriculture is one of the, the heartbeats of our economy and we've got to continue to support that as well. Thank you.
Our business community here, we, we, we have the moms and pops and we have our Walmarts and we have our Fred Meyers and, you know, those kinds of things. I'd like to see us grow, but not too fast. And, and we have to, you know, I think our city planning has done a good job of zoning, laying things out. I mentioned earlier that, you know, we've got the unincorporated, this is a strange place because you've got the unincorporated part of the city of Altmont, which is right in the middle of Klamath Falls and it gets a really low tax bracket. And I think if developers were to come in and take, and work in those, in those areas to redo that section, there's some incentives there. I don't think we want to move it in and incorporate it into the city. We have a backfire there because we have to lower all our taxes out here in the city and then raise them up over here to make it equal. And those folks don't want to come in. They like their septic systems that are aging, which is a problem, but, you know. So it's, that's, that's really interesting. But what it does for us is when something, developers look at coming here, they, you ask Siri, hi Siri, how many people are there in Klamath Falls? Well, nineteen, nineteen thousand. And, and developers go, I can't afford to put a, you know, business down here because there's only nineteen thousand people here. We have to, we have to do some education as we reach out. And I know Kaseeda discovered, choose Klamath is doing that, letting them know, hey, look, we've got a whole bunch of people in the basin and we've kind of got this weird thing on the map that really isn't even here, but the whole city's grown up around this unincorporated area. Well, how do we provide services to that too? Because, you know, they don't have sidewalks and streetlights and, and, and it's more rundown. It's kind of right in the heart. It's kind of, you know, we got a lot of cleaning up to do around here. We have a lot of abandoned vehicles kicking around here. We need some code enforcement as well to help pick those up. And, and I'd like to see us be able to, I was just talking to some of our tow truck companies and they're like, we put our cars in here at night and they get broke into. So why can't we put electric fences up and shock these guys that are tweakers that are coming in here like we do in Eugene? But city, city council says we can't put up electric fences. So thank you.
So we come back to public safety again with this, but the economic development piece, we have to diversify our economy. We have to try and bring in more business, okay, to do that. We don't have enough taxpayers to fund the public safety needs that we have in this community. We absolutely have to support our businesses that are here, our mom and pops. I've been here for twenty years and supporting businesses up and down Main Street. And these are, these are great folks. These are job creators in our community. We have to continue to do that. We have to continue to diversify our economy and bring in more business, but we can't lose sight of our heritage. Our heritage is agriculture. Okay? We can't lose sight of that. We can't just pave over fields and, you know, long for the days of yesteryear. We have to embrace our agriculture community and we have to do both. And when we go forward from here, that's, that's the mission statement that we're going to have. We have to, we have to grow in order to fund the things that we're going to need.
Thank you for giving me something that's a strong spot on me. Being a general contractor and working in construction most of my life, I'm waiting for a visit with Jill over at the college. She seems very proactive in trade schools. And as far as the inner structure, how many people in here have a hard time finding a handyman or somebody to fix something in their house? It seems to be a concurrent problem everywhere. So the trade schools are very important. We want to keep them in-house. So why not create an internship? I was talking to Mark down at the senior center today and as they gave out meals at the center, he said, we need internal fixing and it's a county structure. What better way than any to offer an internship to the students that actually are taking the trade than to work on our county buildings for their internship? Let's keep it here and create something out of it. Culinary school, now that we don't have one anymore. I haven't had one in about a year and a half from my understanding, almost two years. An internship. You have Harramitts possibly and also Rim, Old Rim's Golf Course that can be worked, something can be worked out to keep, get an internship for culinary school. Now you're building inner structure of people that can add and influence people to come here. And if you have influence like that, it's going to support our local businessmen with cooks, with people that can fix the structures in their buildings to keep them up and standing so they can continue to do business. But bringing up in outside contractors is what we have to do right now because we don't have enough in-house people to actually supply them. And what is OIT always focused on? Keep the people here in Klamath County and give them jobs. We're teaching them. We might as well keep them here. Thank you.
All right. This next question will start with Todd. And it has to do, I have several questions, so I'm going to try to compile them together, but it all has to do with the security of our election process. So can you tell me how you feel about that? How you might handle the, making sure that our election process is secure?
Excellent. I attended the mandatory training to be an election observer along with Alan, the two of us, and actually there was ten others. So about twelve of us went through the training that was offered on April 6th. We got a great tour of the clerk's office, saw where the ballots come in, how they're handled, how two different people sit at a table and open them up. And then we went and saw the adjudication workstation and, and I noticed that there was, there's, there's one camera in there that points one direction and there's not another camera covering the adjudication, adjudication station. And so I actually wrote an article and talked to the, talked to the counselor of the commissioners and pointed out and said, you know, the other thing I noticed is, is you look at the schedule, the, the livestream camera is only turned on when one of the twelve of us that are invited during those times that we're invited to observe. That's the only time the, the livestream camera is on. And my question is, is why can't that camera be turned on from the first ballot till the certification just left on twenty-four seven? So that's the, that's, that would be my suggestion that we add, and then we add a second camera angle as well.
So I've been fortunate through the years to work on a couple of elections, work on it for a couple of candidates. And one of the things that we'll say that we're really blessed here in Klamath County. We've got some pretty professional people that work in the clerk's office. They work very, very hard to maintain transparency and they do, they do a phenomenal job with the, with the task that is pretty impossible given how large this county is and how spread out it is. On any given election, you're going to have roughly, you know, twenty to thirty thousand ballots cast. And in a county that's sixty-one hundred square miles, roughly the same size as Connecticut and Rhode Island, getting all those ballots into the clerk's office, getting counted, getting them organized and everything else is no small feat. And so I, I really applaud the work that Rochelle Long and her team do to, to keep our elections on. And so I, I really applaud the work that Rochelle Long and her team do to, to keep our elections honest and to keep the transparency first and foremost. So she does a great job and I think they've got some good people that work there.
Alan?
I did have some questions similar to Todd, but we waited for a response on Tuesday from that, so I didn't want to jump to go on that. But I had a question myself that I was curious upon. And that is the Axol film or the recordings of the camera or cameras that are in the rooms. Is there a server, a backup where it's located? How many people are able to sign, one, two or three? Is in the sheriffs or police departments? There's an evidence locker and usually two people have to sign minimum to go in there to retrieve something out. So we have accountability and transparency at the same time. So we are only asking questions, basic questions, to make sure the transparency is there for all the voters of Klamath County and for ourselves. I don't think we're, see where any of the questions we've asked are out of hand. But now we come to this part, I would like to congratulate Rochelle Long, our county clerk in charge of the elections for an outstanding job under the stress of pressure to continue to address all questions that Klamath County has for her.
Amen. So going last is kind of tough sometimes when it's a question that there's really one or two answers to and you feel like you're just taking somebody else's answers. So these answers were great, but let me ask you something. Please raise your hand if you have any concerns with our, our clerk here in Klamath County. Me either. Me either. You do, you have?
I think you need to rephrase the question.
Okay.
I don't think it's appropriate that you ask the argument against Rochelle because I don't think anybody here is. I think we all respect and admire her.
We're, we're, we're going to say the exact same thing. I think she is outstanding.
But never.
I don't, let me, let me answer and then we can talk later, okay?
Well, if you would rephrase the question and ask how many?
Okay, well, let me just get to my point and then we can do that later, okay? My point is that Rochelle's doing an outstanding job like these gentlemen have said about her. I have not studied our election process in Klamath County at all. So I think that it's important for me that I don't try to offer a solution or try to, try to find a problem for a solution. I don't even know what that problem is or what my solution may be. I think she's doing an outstanding job. It sounds like these guys have taken tours and they have some ideas that they passed on to her. I applaud that, I think that's outstanding, but I, I have not done that. So I think first and foremost, I would educate myself about that process, see if there was a way that we could streamline the process. But I think that our clerk's office in Klamath County is doing an outstanding job and I tip my hat to them. Thank you.
I do, we talked about this a little bit in the beginning. I do want to mention again, the candidates are going to make themselves available. So if you have a follow-up question to any of these questions, or I have quite a few questions that I'm probably looking at the time not going to make it to, I'm working on it, but if you have any questions that we're pressing, you will have an opportunity to ask them one-on-one after this. So stick around for that. The next question is to start with Brandon. How do we get air service back to Klamath County? Get air service back to Klamath County?
How do we get air service back to Klamath County? Wow. I, I think the challenge has been that when we've tried that in the past, it hasn't worked. We've had to subsidize it with, you know, taxpayer money. And as soon as taxpayer money runs out, then they bail out pretty quickly. I hate throwing good money after bad. So I, I think one of the ways we do that is, you know, we come back to economic development, we come back to the business community and we come back to what is the need? If we generate need, then we will have the ability to bring air, air service back to this county. Right now, there's just, there's not enough business, there's not enough need for air service. And they can't make the money, they can't make the money work. At the end of the day, those, those companies operate like a business, like so many of our chamber members that are here tonight. If, if it doesn't work, then you don't do it. And unfortunately, that's, that's where we're at right now. I don't think any of us want to see, go back to a system where it's, you know, federally subsidized and companies can't make money or make tons of money at it and things of that, like, things like that. So I, I think sticking to the system that we've done in the past of throwing money at the problem hasn't worked and I would not be in favor of continuing to throw money at it.
Alan?
As I spoke about the interstructure part with the trade schools and the culinary schools, if this did mature, it would probably bring enough executives and other high-end people that there could be the possibility, like I mentioned, of one day opening the airport again. That would be great. Also too, there's another aspect to it that could be looked into, I think. And the gentleman down the street, he lives in New York. What does he do? He has a helicopter flight that he has and he shuttles people from the airport to different areas where there's helipads. We could be one of those. We could start small and grow from that. But to think that we're not out of that realm of possibly getting some type of air service in here, now I think it would be a great idea, but to be able to use grants to accomplish that along with taxpayer money, any at all, would be absolutely wrong. It hasn't worked in the past. We need to let the system that we create here work for itself to bring it to us. Thank you.
So when I was part of the city of Klamath Falls Executive Leadership Team, the airport director, John Barcela, was on that team with me and we had many, many, many conversations as a team about air service, went through that process of getting Penn Air here. And that program was subsidized quite heavily by you. And if we don't get enough seats on the plane filled, that, that just doesn't pencil out. So that was a losing cause for the taxpayers. Was it convenient? Heck yeah. I loved having Penn Air here, made my life much easier, especially in the winter. But part of the problem, the comp, or part of the issue that compounded that problem was the cost of the flights. And to make it pencil out, the, the expense per ticket was quite a bit more than just driving over to Portland and catching, or Medford and catching a flight out of Medford. So for that to pencil out, it, it just got to have more people on the plane to utilize that, that resource. And it just didn't work out. And quite honestly, until we can find ourselves in a position where maybe we have a bigger population or we have more industry in town where people are needing to fly more often, we might be able to get that to pencil out. But if it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense for us to be using your money to subsidize, subsidize one business in town to provide that service. So how do we get air, air service back? I really don't know. Because as we struggled to try to bring another airline carrier in after Penn Air, it just did not, it just did not make financial sense for the taxpayers.
I think it's doubly difficult now because we're used to working from home and zooming here and there. You know, a lot of business is done differently now thanks to the pandemic. There were some of us that tried that before and we made it work, but we were the oddballs. Now it's, it's totally acceptable for people to telecommute. And so, you know, the other issue is, is that I think when Penn Air came in, you know, the size of the smaller airplanes doubled. They went from like 30-seaters to 70-seaters in, I think with Alaska and Verizon Air and some of these. So we have to fill twice what we were doing before. So it is, it is a very high cliff that we have to climb and I don't see it happening anytime soon. I'd love it because I love flying, but I don't, I, yeah, unless someone comes up with a solution, we'd be open to see it.
Alan, this next question is three parts. I have three questions that are similar. So a couple of parts. How does your personal life affect your ability to serve as county commissioner? How will you balance what you believe and what you want if it doesn't coincide with the majority? And how will you know if you're serving the needs of the majority of the citizens if you're elected?
Very good question. Transparency is one and that's why the open door policy is extremely important. Because that's the only way that you're going to know whether or not you know what the people are thinking and what their requests are. And as far as my personal life, I don't let my personal life come and interfere with my job. Never has and never will to this day. I serve my God and the people that elect me, if that's possible. And you do elect me to be your commissioner, that is my promise and my oath to you. There is no, two ways about it. You are who I represent or would represent. And any other way is unacceptable to me, my principles and the way life was taught to me. Thank you.
I wish I knew who wrote this question. Thank you, I love it. This is an outstanding question. The reason that I like it is because it's been my life for 28 years as a law enforcement officer. I, I swore to protect you, to protect your constitutional rights and my opinion didn't really matter when I did that job. And I think a county commissioner has to act in the same manner. It's about you. It's about what you desire. It's, it, it's important that we represent you in this county. And how do I balance that? I think that's an interesting question too. So what if you wanted something I didn't want? What if my personal life didn't match up to what your ideas were or what the county's ideas were? As long as I'm not asked to lie, speak and steal and cheat, I think we'll get along just fine. There are some things that I absolutely will not be unethical about at all, right? It, it just can't happen. But my job is to represent you with honesty, integrity, passion and commitment and that's what I will do. And that's what I have done and that's what I've proven to you as your police chief for the last many years. And how do I know if I'm doing that job successfully? I'll have coffee talks or I'll have some cool name, I'll come up with some slogan where I ask you. When I was a chief of police, I developed the community police advisory team and I met with the group of people that represented all walks of life throughout our community. And we met and I asked, "How am I doing? What do you need from me?" And we developed strategies and policies and procedures that coincided directly with the needs and expectations of the community we served. And that's how I expect to be your county commissioner as well. Listen to you, I heard a, a great quote from Joshua Johnson, he's on NBC and he said, "It's not my job to tell you what to think, it's my job to think about what you tell me." And I love that quote and that's exactly how I want to be your commissioner. Thank you.
Well, my family is, is here and they're part of my constituents here and so we'd be representing, I mean, they're, they're here and I'd be, just like I'd be representing you. My personal religious background or beliefs doesn't, that's, doesn't matter when it comes to working for you and listening. So Dave said it very well. We're here to work for you, represent you and to listen. And as far as work balance, I've been for the last nine years running my own company. I do 60-hour weeks, 80-hour weeks and, you know, I expect to work just as hard for you as I would for myself.
So it's an interesting question, but I, I come back to the things that I think matter most. First and foremost, I'm a conservative, my moral compass is, starts there. Do I agree with everybody? No. Is everybody going to agree with me? No. But we're going to start from that and if I agree with you, then great. If the majority agrees with your position, okay, that's what you're electing me to do. You're electing me to represent you, okay? And so we go from there. I may not get everything I want every single time and that's fine. But we're going to, we're going to keep going after it and we're going to keep fighting for every piece of, you know, whatever it is that we need to go after to get Klamath County back on its feet again. We move forward with that. The, in terms of, you know, the moral compass or the open door meetings and things like that, it's really interesting. I do that today. I travel around this county every month, okay? I'm working with every fire agency, I'm in every community, I'm doing those meetings, I'm shaking those hands. And that's part of my job, is trying to figure out what those communities need, you know, working with their fire chiefs, working with other community leaders. And it's, it's one of those things that I've been doing that. I've been doing that for 20 years. I've been elected to represent the city or the area of Chelquon on their fire board two different times. I've served before, I've served for 20 years. It's, it's what I do and it's what I'll continue to do.
All right, combining another couple of questions, trying to get as many of them out there as I can. But we have talked a lot this evening about the housing shortage here in Klamath that impacts every sector of the housing market, including rental units. And it does have the potential of affecting our growth. So the first part is, please describe as a commissioner how you would address this critical issue? And how will you address the lack of water resource for the people who are already living here while you're trying to grow our city? David started.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I quite understand the water on the, the water on the backside of that question, but I'll do my best. And if I messed up?
There's a, there's a little bit of a, this, the rest of it is, there are not enough natural resources to support any population growth. I am deeply concerned by a push to grow a city already beyond its resource.
Okay, perfect, that makes much more sense. Thank you for that, I appreciate that. I talked about housing a little bit ago and we'll go back to it because I think this is extremely important. For us to grow as a community economically, socially, we've got to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place to do so and that starts with housing. We have to make sure that we have adequate housing for people to come in here and live. I talked a minute ago, I'm going to, I'm going to touch on it again. We have a good inventory of low-income housing. We have a horrible inventory of mid-income housing. So we've really got to prioritize that, that market and we've got to prioritize increasing that inventory. K C D has got some projects in place right now that are outstanding to develop some land, to really put a dent in that market. And I'm really excited about that. As a commissioner, we've got to work with developers to minimize some of the bureaucratic red tape and help them build. We might even have to incentivize some building. I know that sounds crazy, I don't know what that would look like yet, but we've got to figure out ways to incentivize and make it easier for developers to come in and really target that mid, that mid-level income market. There's a second piece of that I want to hit on real quick too. And I apologize, I've been speaking fast all night, but I got a ton to say in two minutes. I've met with farmers that say, "Hey, we buy farmland that's got a house on it, but we don't want to rent it out because maybe it's sitting on five acres." And we can't find any way to break that land up. So we can, we can provide housing or sell a piece of land to somebody that works for us to help them establish their credit and help them have a home, but we're having some issues with the amount of land that comes with that house, so we just leave it vacant. And I find that unfortunate. We need to work with people that have some of these properties to figure out, how can we help them with lot line adjustments and put some of these houses back on the market so it helps our tax rolls and at the same times helps employees for these farms get into their first home? We've got to protect our natural resources. I talked about some programs to, to work on making more water quantity in the lake. And I'll leave it at that for now because she's going to turn the sign over in a second, but I'd love to talk to you more about that. I had like three seconds, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so one of the things we can do, at least within the county, is we can develop ADUs. We can do duplexes on existing lots, that's something that we can do. We also can offer tax exemptions to builders that build more than 10 houses in a, in a year. Because that incentivizes them to get in here and build. I've talked with David Weekly, Toll Brothers, some of the largest home builders in America. And, you know, they, they're the ones that are trying to make it work and trying to come. I've actually wrote a LOI for the Ridgewater properties up here and worked with, with some of them and they said, "Man, it just, no matter what we do, it doesn't pencil unless we get the break that they gave, you know, Overend Bend or, or Prineville." We're not doing the same thing that they did. We don't want to make the same mistakes they did in growing so fast, so quick. We want to have a plan. But we've got show-ready homes right here in Klamath Falls. We'll show already lots that are ready to go. But with the volatility of the inflation and the cost of building materials is such a gamble and interest rates going up, our builders are just, I mean, even, even the, the ones in America, the biggest ones are just putting the brakes on. So that's kind of where we're at and we have to figure out how we're going to get over that hurdle.
So one of the things with housing that, you know, we have to look at and it was alluded to a minute ago, but the, we have a number of subdivisions that came into existence 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago that are 30% done, 30% full and you had empty lots all over the place. We got to figure out a way to build on some of those empty lots. As I talk to construction companies and home builders around here, one of the things that they're challenged with, they don't have enough people. They can't find qualified people to build houses. We don't have enough qualified plumbers, we don't have enough qualified electricians. The laws in Oregon have been very, very restrictive in how we certify those trades and we have to do better at that. And that's one of those things that we have to, as a commissioner, yeah, okay, we don't directly, you know, impact some of those things. But we have to go beat on the doors and knock on the, knock on the doors and beat on the desks and figure out, you know, how we can fix that and how we can make that better or how we can improve that for, for those construction companies that are here. Are there tax incentive options? I'm sure there probably are. We have to be very, very careful how we do that though. We've got to make sure that we're not taking money out of the pockets of, you know, our special districts that provide public safety, you know, certain. special districts that provide public safety, you know, services to us. Our fire agencies largely survive on a, on a special district or on a small tax rate, and many of those are struggling already the last couple of years. So we have to be very, very careful about that.
Alan?
Affordable housing is a rare commodity here. First of all, I want to speak on the water part, because if you don't have the water, like was mentioned, you can't build interstructure. I did take a tour of one of the treatment plants down in Elsinore, California, where I came from. They, state-of-the-art, 2007, they started on their project. Now they have four treatment plants. They can treat pretty much any type of water and turn it into anything you want. We don't have that, I do believe at present, I won't mention any names, but someone is working in that. And with the amount of money I, that we have available, I hope some of that money finds its way into those hands, so we can take and build a plant that could treat our water to take care of some of our interstructure, so we can build it. And as far as affordable housing, I think I mentioned this before, if I didn't, you could use joint ventures. We have a military base, you have SkyLakes, OIT, KCC, all these individuals that could probably find ways or create ways, with help from the county and other funds, to create affordable housing. The more, the cheaper. You find an outside contractor, yes, he can stack them up and build them. A lady across the street from me said, "If I had a chance for availability of something like that," she would sell her house and move into it immediately. So do we have people in rural areas that want to come here to be closer to work at SkyLakes and OIT and all the rest of the community? Yes. They can't afford to drive that far, especially with the gas prices, and if you did do something like that, you might be able to get some economic green money out of it, because now you're supporting not driving as many miles for people. So that falls under the green category. Thanks.
All right, we are getting close to the time, I do, we are going to give each of them three minutes for closing arguments, so I think I have time for about one more question. As I've already mentioned, you will have an opportunity to ask the questions that I didn't get a chance to ask out in the lobby afterwards. I have a bunch of questions here, apologize if I didn't get yours, but I have quite a few here that are all related to workforce, so I'm going to ask that compilation of them, and we will start with Todd. Workforce is an issue in our community, it's harming our businesses, it's also harming the rest of the community. What is a commissioner's role? What can a commissioner do to encourage broader employment and help relieve this issue?
Well, I know if we had more well-drillers here, we could do a lot of different things. So I've actually made some calls and tried to bring some well-drilled drillers from other areas into the area to help us, since there is money for that. As far as workplace development, one of the challenges that we have is the journeyman that are the, in order to, again, it comes down to the rules that Oregon has for its journeymen and its, I just passed an Oregon State General Contractors Board, and I have to choose which type of contractor I want to be. I can't just be a contractor and work in several different areas. And some of these drillers, you need to be a jack of all trades, and then so that narrowing down of that definition makes it a little, little hard to serve a community. And then the, we only have so many plumbers here in town, and if they each take, they can only do so many, like two, they can only have two apprentices at one time. So even if we had kids from Klamath County, or Klamath Community College come in and work with them, we still have a bottleneck, so I don't have all the answers on how to, how to develop that workforce. But we definitely need to look at recruiting and bringing, bringing tradespeople into the area that can, that are willing to mentor, and I think that needs to be one of our recruiting things, is if you come to the area, you should be able to have people journey under you. So I'd start with that.
So I think over the last few years, we've started to, we've started to see some increased effort with KCC and OIT and others, but some increased effort around teaching the trades. And that's good. All three of my kids went to Eagle Ridge High School here in Klamath Falls, and they're, they've developed a really great program to work with construction companies to funnel kids that have that interest into those trade programs. They're one of the leaders in that, and it's really good to see that within our, within our public school systems, and we need to continue to funnel those, those kids into those programs. KCC is doing a wonderful job at trying to start up a, the trades program for fire and EMS certifications as well. These are, these, not every kid needs to go to a four-year college, not every kid needs a four-year degree. And it's taken a while for, for some, for some of our educational institutions to learn that, but it's, it's good to see that we're, we're starting to go down that road, and we're starting to see the light on it. Now we need to just put the pedal down and go faster.
Alan?
Employment is definitely an important thing, and, and the valley where I came from, it was extremely high, and when we were done, it was down to approximately 1.5, under 2%, which was a great success. And how we did that, when the solar moved in, we made sure that we kept an eye on them to make sure that the prevailing wages were paid for anything that had government money attached to it. And by the way, those are 40 to 42 to $70 an hour job. They transformed our entire valley. Yes, they're coming here, but the oversight that needs to be done on them is, from what I've seen and heard sitting in the meetings, is not quite satisfactory to have that happen. And I know there's rules and regulations Oregon has on that, but overs, more oversight I feel needs to be done on that. And also, Oregon is the only state that does not have any reciprocating laws for California general contractors license, and there are in all the western states. So as far as contractors go, I would maybe look into seeing what, seeing what we could do to have a reciprocating law for the contractors of other states, and then make rules and regulations of an oversight where they would then come up to speed. But I'm strapped, even though I'm qualified for it. I'm overqualified in Oregon with my California contractors license. I'd love to do work here, but Oregon forbids it unless I go down there and do a license, and then I can't do any of the work myself. So it's counterproductive almost to get an Oregon license, because you can't participate. And if the subcontractor keeps your job from coming in on time, guess whose fault it is? It's the contractor's fault. So it's very counterproductive. Thanks.
So workforce development is one of my top priorities, it's something that I'm really interested in, and something I want to continue to explore. We hear businesses say that that's one of the reasons that they don't come into Klamath County. We've got some outstanding organizations in Klamath County that are working on workforce development programs. We talked about KCC, we talked about Oregon Tech, but there's also, there's other programs as well that are out there. And that's all great, I, I want to continue to work with those guys and, and ask them, what do they need from the Klamath County Commissioners to be more successful? Is there a way for them to expand their programs? Is there a way for them to service more people that want to be engaged in those programs? And what do those dollars look like? Do they need to build another building? Are they trying to expand into different land? Are there permitting issues that are getting in the way? So I would start by talking with these organizations that really work on workforce development programs, and ask, what do they need to continue to grow? I think that's the first step. But taking a step back from that even further, I know there are internship programs for high school kids, and the, the advisors that put those summer internship programs together struggle with people with private industry or private organizations signing up to take somebody in on that internship program, because there is, there is a cost associated with it. So I would really like to work with the high schools that have the internship programs, I know Mazum High School specifically, and ask them, what, what does this really cost? And if the county were to help subsidize this, what does that look like? And what, what's our return on investment? And have an honest conversation with the high schools about how do we enhance those summer internship programs to really give these, these kids some job experience, but also motivate them to figure out where they want to go with their lives? It may not be college, and that's fine, it may be a trade, but let's let them explore these trades, and really get them pushed off on the, on the right foot into these programs.
All right, so it is going to be time for short closing statements. As I mentioned in the beginning, we started with Alan, we'll go backwards, so we'll start with Brandon for the clothing, clothing, closing. You will have three minutes, you'll still get a warning at 30 seconds, you don't have to use all three minutes if you don't want to, and then we will adjourn. Brandon?
Well, once again, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and all the great businesses that make up the chamber in Klamath County for putting on this forum, and for everybody that's here tonight. I hope we've answered a lot of your questions, I hope we've, you know, addressed a lot of your concerns. For me, as I move forward, we look at things like public safety, and we look at, you know, how we continue to feed the economic engine that is Klamath County, continue to grow that. For the last 25 years, I've been a business leader. For 20 of those years, I've also worked in our community here in Klamath County, and I've served with distinction in a lot of different areas, so I understand public safety, I understand our communities. I've been here, I've been in the trenches. And as we move forward, we have to, we have to depend on the people that have been here and the people that have done that. We have, we have some great, great talent in this community. Sometimes we have to work a little harder at unlocking it, but I think as we move forward, it's going to be, Klamath is going to be on the rise, I know things are concerning right now for the economy, but we have a lot to look forward to, and we have a lot of positive energy in this community that we can bring forward. Thank you.
Alan? Oh, we're going to go, sorry, Todd.
Okay. It's been an honor to be here tonight, loved the questions and the energy that this community has. We have fallen in love with Klamath Falls, being here just a short time, but, you know, it's been fun to explore and get out and know everybody. I enjoyed going around, getting all my signatures and meeting the business people and, and learning about the issues, and I'll, I love learning, and I love people. And I'll always continue to advocate for clarity, for common sense, for better communication on the issues that affect our citizens and our environment. Thank you very much.
Well, a lot of people have asked, "Why are you doing this, Dave?" You know, you, you had a successful law enforcement career of 28 years, your wife and I have a, your wife, you and your wife have a cattle company, you're retired, why do you want to get into public service? And I think that's a, that's a great question, you know, why do you want to be the commissioner? And here's what I go back to, and this is the truth. I love our business, I love what I'm doing, but I loved being a public servant. And after I left public safety, I felt there was a bit of a hole in my heart. And I felt like, how, how do I get back into, how do I get back into being there for people, being a voice for people, fighting for people's rights, but not wear a gun and a badge anymore? And this seemed like a good opportunity for me. I believe that my leadership skills, I believe that my passion for Klamath County, I believe that my education, and I believe that my advanced training fit nicely into the role of Klamath County Commissioner. As your police chief for six years, I think that I proved myself to you. I think I did a very good job for you, and I think most everybody would agree with that. And I'd like to translate that into the next step and be a Klamath County Commissioner. This, this decision did not come lightly. I spent a lot of time and a lot of prayer thinking about this, and deciding if this was the right, the right thing for me to do. And one of the things I told my wife, and I've told a lot of people, was I wasn't going to be aggressive about getting this position. I was going to let God drive, and I was going to jump in the backseat, and we were going to see if this was God's will. And as I've gone through this campaign process, I feel like it is. I'm deeply humbled, and I'm deeply motivated by the support I've seen from Klamath County, specifically the business and the agricultural community. The praise that I've gotten, the encouragement that I've gotten, and the financial contributions that people have given me are just absolutely astonishing, and I'm very humbled by that. So I'm honored for Klamath County Commissioner for you. I'm not doing it for me, I'm retired, I had a successful career, but I would like to be your voice, I would like to be your champion, and I would like to fight for your rights, your needs, and your desires here at home, in Salem, and in DC. God bless you, and thanks for coming. I'm Dave Hensley.
Thank you for having us all here tonight. I did come out of my retirement after 12 years, like Hensley did. I had no reason to come out, but I saw a need, because the voices of the people obviously were not being heard, and that's why there's ballot measures on there to join greater Idaho, obviously. And the state of Jefferson is alive and well again, so it seems like there's a lot of voices that aren't being heard, and if they were, I don't think we'd have those situations at this point in time. I have no ties to special interests, and to let people know, half the salary will be donated to non-charitable donations here in Klamath County only, to help the homeless and the people that don't have food. I will bring to the Klamath County honesty, integrity, and values with principles with 30 years of ex- what? Excuse me? Leadership and experience. I have a thorough understanding of what it takes to lead operational success, a passion for taking care of people, and a zeal for achieving the full potential of an organization. It has always given me great pleasure working and donating my time to help enrich so many people's lives. I have always and will defend the Constitution of the United States of America and protect the Second Amendment. Again, I want to reach out and give Rochelle kudos and attaboys for being transparent and honest with the election on May 17th, and for all the voters of Klamath County. Special thanks to Heather, and also to Darla, thank you for participating. And I want to add one last thing. I want to thank all law enforcement for their dedicated duty during COVID, after such a trying time. If it wasn't for you, who knows where we'd be right now? We thank you for that.
Thank you. I have to just say really quick, last night, we did this for the Republican gubernatorial candidates, and they used all of their three minutes, so I thought I was going to run out of time, but thank you, guys. Can we give them a round of applause? And thank you all for coming, for submitting questions, for just doing all of that. There may be some recordings of last night's and tonight's, we're working on that, so watch the chamber's Facebook page, if we get access to those, that's where we will post them. We appreciate you all, and we'll adjourn, so you can ask them some questions one-on-one if you'd like.